Okay, we're at six thirty. We will call the meeting to order. Ms. Wilson, do we have a confirmation of notice to the media?
Yes, ma'am. They were notified.
Okay. And I do declare that we have a form with us today. And I will need an request or an approval, a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. That's it.
Thank you. All those in favor? My thanks everyone. The motion passes. And then we'll do the welcome and the pledge. I would be honored to make a little pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to welcome everyone tonight. We have a long agenda in front of us. And just a reminder to everyone, if you could silence all your devices so we don't disturb them. We're normally live streaming, but I think we're having some technical difficulties tonight. And we, I just appreciate everyone being here. I wish that I could, I was trying to think of a way to call out, recognize all of our athletic accomplishments this past week and a half. But I felt like if I noted one person, then I would leave out someone else. And I certainly wouldn't purposely intend to do that. So, but just to our spring athletes, I think everyone's done a great job. So, we're excited about that for you. So, thank you all for being here tonight. And we'll move into public participation. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the list?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, we have, Mr. Fielder, who wanted to speak about students and staff. We have a second. We have Reverend David Kennedy, who would like to speak about racism and an attempt to kick Dr. Thomas out of power. And they both submitted their forms before the deadline. So, Mr. Fielder was first to submit his.
Okay. Mr. Fielder, if you would like to come forward.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fielder, I appreciate you coming up. And you'll have three minutes to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a man called Reverend Fielder. I come as a taxpayer. First and foremost, I want to recognize that Lawrence County, Lawrence District fifty-five is named after a no-good cracker named Henry Lawrence, who raped, made, killed, murdered, as he brought blacks from what is called Africa. So, you have this district named in his honor. And I have a solution that I think that blacks who were kidnapped and brought here to this country should exercise a moratorium on sports. I heard it said that you know, want to recognize the sport. Because I know that our black boys especially are the ones who keep this facility, as well as all of the schools, in operation. I'm going to read very quickly from a book. It says that the boys are slaves making money for schools and slave owners. The parents are made to spend money to see their children make money for the schools and colleges. Games are a trillion-dollar combination of plantations owned by white men. When your boys are, that is, in the game, they are cheered. But when they are protectors in their communities, they are feared. Blacks should stop playing all games until they are free. It is pathetic, not only for the schools, but the black community, that they would not take their God-given responsibility to keep their children from being brutalized, abused. And when they go through all of that, for some reason, they're kicked out of school. So, the time has come for blacks to stop using so much of their muscles and start using more of their minds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fielder.
Over to you, Dr.
Mr. Reverend Kennedy, are you in the room?
Yes.
Okay.
Please. I want to give honor first to God Almighty and give honor to the board in a special honor to have a beautiful intelligent superintendent of this district. I want to address you because I am concerned. If you're going to be a school board, you need to be a just, righteous, and holy school board. All the games that's being played on Facebook, talking about dethroning the superintendent, is an old racist game. President Obama learned it the hard way. Voted in, and then somebody like Mitch McConnell. And that's how some of you are acting. You're going to make sure you destroy the leadership because they're black. It doesn't make sense. And you can't tell me you don't know what's going on. On the Facebook, some of the children of some of the races, when we enter into a race, responding on the Facebook. On the Facebook, they want to know how they're going to get rid of Dr. Thomas. If that's not a nigger game, you tell me what is. As Christians, as some of you claim to be, understand one thing. The Republican Party drew lines in all of Lawrence County to make black people lose. Even some of the people who were not part of the general election became part of the general election. That's an old plantation racist game. The superintendent is not only beautiful, but she's a very intelligent woman with a heart for the children. No board member should possess the right to have a Trump-style on Facebook with all of these races trying to undermine the superintendent. And I know, you know about it. Unfortunately, I believe that some of you are part of it. You are forcing the community to replay their future. I am president of the Lawrence County branch of the NACP. Our purpose is to protect African-American in the social, political, economics, and educational realms of life. And to utilize methods to accomplish that. And I think we might be insured to be part of some of these people who are in business, willing to boycott them. In their necessary, if you all are all white, school board without engaging, your responsibility is to try to bring unity to engage everybody. But if you like, Sneaky Pete.
Thank you for your remarks. Your three times are up. Thank you so much.
Sneaky Pete races. And no child should call another child a nigger lover. Something done to the black guy, and you let it go to your daughter.
Thank you for coming.
Something wrong with that picture. Something wrong with that picture. You stopped teaching her to call people niggers.
Okay, now we're going to move forward. Ms. Wilson, was that in for public participation?
Yes, too.
Okay, thank you for those that came forward. Now, we're going to need a motion to approve the minutes for our workshop meeting on April the nineteenth and also the meeting on April the twenty-sixth.
Approve the meeting minutes from April nineteenth and the meeting minutes from April twenty-sixth.
Thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes. Now, we're going to move forward with our presentation for the Lawrence County Growth Presentation with County Councilman Brown Patterson and Mayor Nathan Sin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate y'all allowing me to speak this evening and update you. A few weeks back, I had a meeting with, all right, here we go. Del Satterfield and myself had a meeting with Dr. Thomas, Miss Little, and several other staff from the district to go over some of the subdivisions that are being proposed to the county hall. And I mean, we decided that you wanted Mayor Sin and I to come back and give a presentation to all of you. I gave a similar spreadsheet to them that day, but it gave a little more detail this time. And I presented each of y'all's at your desk. If you want to take a look at it. The ones highlighted in the yellow color are all in District fifty-five. You'll see the Three Creek subdivision that actually splits the district. And that's what's attached on your last page. You can see the district line that cuts right down the middle, that subdivision. If you wanted to see what was in and what was out. And then those last five on the bottom there in Bringle School District. What you'll see in total, we're looking at about twenty-eight hundred rooftops that have been proposed. Of course, you'll see what has been approved, what's waiting for approval, so on and so forth. But eleven hundred and thirty of those lie in the county limits of District fifty-five. Now, the mayor can have them all for you here in a minute. As far as the county's concerned, that's what we're looking at. My time lapse is a little.
I apologize. You might need to speak.
But you'll see, for example, if you look at number eight on your list there, that was a project that was already approved and then was later canceled by the developer. So, just because they're on here doesn't mean they're necessarily set in stone. You'll only see actually one that's under construction at the moment. Number three and number four, they've actually already been approved once. And then they changed their plan and are waiting to reapprove. So, just because that we see them doesn't mean they're going to happen. It's an ever-evolving list. There were, there were four presented last Tuesday to the planning commission, and they only approved one of them. And the other three may or may not come back for another chance. So, I know growth's a big deal in the county. We got a lot that's coming. But just because you do see it on here doesn't mean they're going to show up. And also, just to keep in mind, those eleven hundred and thirty homes aren't going, we're not going to wake up in the morning and they'll be in existence. So, the purpose of this is kind of trying to plan ahead. Like I said, the only ones that broke the ground yet are those twelve homes on Fairground Street, wherever. So, we have plenty of planning time. The county's doing our part to make sure our infrastructure is properly set. And I want to make sure that y'all are aware so y'all can make the right decisions to plan ahead and get ready to discover them one way or another, whether we like it or not. But we got to be ready. Are there any questions from the board members or Dr. Thomas that I can answer?
Do we have an idea of how many school-aged children will be included in that number?
So, we attempted, also our meeting was, Madam Munnion is the CEO of Chamber. But she had been working on that. And we got some information. It broke down some age groups, but nothing that really specified which was school-aged and which was not. And that granted, I don't expect all eleven hundred and thirty to be school-aged, absolutely sure of that. But that demographic, we were unable to attain. That was a question that was asked by Dr. Thomas's folks in that last meeting.
Could you, could you give us an idea, you know, of course, we know all of the eleven hundred and thirty homes aren't going to be built in the night. But do you have a breakdown of what you expect, like maybe in the next two years, next three?
Honestly, with the structure prices the way they are, it's hard to say. There's several, you'll probably get the mayor to reference a couple of his, that we all expected to be moving dirt by now. And they're kind of bush balls. And I don't like lumber prices are through the roof. So, right now, it's kind of anybody's guess again. The number three and number four are pretty, pretty good on the go. I would guess they'd be the next ones to, as far as the large ones go, they're going to be moved. The others are still in the preliminary stages. Right now, Three Creek, number nine, it actually got approved Tuesday. They seem pretty gung-ho about breaking grounds. So, you might expect to see that one relatively soon. But as you can see, only forty-two of those hundred and sixty-one are actually in fifty-five.
Well, for example, like the number one and two, have the guesses by them. Do those developers, have they already provided you with some sort of completion date?
They have not. So, they're still, I know number two is still in the preliminary area, working out all the infrastructure. Because inside each of these subdivisions, they are responsible, the developer is, for their own infrastructure. So, all the roads, their gas lines, their water lines. So, before they're finally approved, they have to bring all that back and let our Public Works Department officially approve them now. It's usually taken a then unless there's something out of whack. They know what the rules are. And they can only abide by them. Getting their lot widths and lot sizes is usually a big piece of the puzzle. So, those, I'll be honest, I'm not sure about number one, if this gets out in this final approval. I know number two is not. Anything else? I appreciate the opportunity. Feel free, please, to call me anytime if you have a question, as well as Del Satterfield, who is our acting administrator and our public works director.
And don't keep Dr. Thomas and his staff or desert be abreast of progress. That would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. We are attending to our best week. Planning to meet, meet once a month. Last week was that. I'll be sending this report to Dr. Thomas every month when we get an updated spreadsheet at a minimum. And if there's any more detail, like we have a split subdivision, we'll do our best to outline which ones are in and which ones are out. But definitely, we'll keep Dr. Thomas. I saw we started that meeting last month. And I hope we can continue the open communication to make sure everybody stays informed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board and Dr. Thomas. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I've provided you with a little bit of a handout. It'll sort of guide my comments, but you may want to reference that. Just to give you some perspective, you'll see on the key figures there, number of subdivisions built in the last forty years, zero. Now, we're talking specifically in the city of Lawrence. And a population growth from nineteen eighty to two thousand and nineteen of negative sixteen point four percent. If you look at that as sort of the framework of where we started out, and then look at where we are now, just in the year two thousand and twenty-one, the city of Lawrence has issued seventy-eight new building permits. There are five new subdivisions planned just inside the city limits of the city of Lawrence. And of those, it is anticipated that we're looking at up to fifteen hundred new homes. As my friend, the chairman, said, all of these won't pop up tomorrow, not breakfast time. But on the other hand, if we have a possibility that many homes, it's seen prudent as community leaders for us to come to the other piece of the the three-legged stool between the county, the city, and our schools to say, you need to be informed and be able to plan accordingly. I know that there are some in the community who are worried that, you know, maybe we're just sort of asleep at the wheel and all this growth is coming and we're happy about new tax dollars or whatever. But, but that there's really no plan to control that. I can say for the city's part that that's absolutely not true. We are, we are actively working, not only with our planning commission, but directly with developers to make sure that the developers that are coming to Lawrence advance the kind of community that we want in Lawrence. The discussions that I've had with home builders who have been interested in coming years to say, we don't want to sort of play to the lowest common denominator and have the smallest postage stamp-sized lots we can get and the cheapest possible house we can throw together. We want to have communities that are going to be attractive and additions, good additions to our community for decades to come. And what we've been really pleased about in the city is that they've been receptive to that. They like that because, you know, it means that the folks who are going to be coming to their communities can count on their houses being good investments. They're able to sort of sell that way a life to their customers. So, there are guardrails in place regarding the law, regarding zoning in the city, regarding the approval that has to come from the city council, regarding the proactive steps that I'm trying to take as mayor. But that is, that is not to say that we have complete control over what comes or doesn't come. And if any percentage of what is planned to come comes, I think the takeaway that I would encourage y'all to hear is that we're in a position where we need new schools. Or at least expanding facilities of some of the schools that we have, or some combination thereof. I don't know. It's not my job. I trust y'all to do that. But I don't have any particular agenda that I want you to buy, other than I just want you to hear that we have a need. And I would very much encourage you to take up the conversation and hear that this is a need that is coming from your community. And hear that there's a commitment on our part to do whatever we can to work with you, to cooperate with you, to make sure that Lawrence has the best possible schools that it can. Under this section there, and you can see how it says, the impact on our schools. You'll forgive me, that's just sort of some brainstorming on my part. What I, what I listed there is the bad news, is that we have limited room to absorb new growth at this point. We have aging infrastructure. There have been no new schools built, at least in the city of Lawrence since nineteen eighty, prior to nineteen eighty, for that matter. And there's no immediate source of a bunch of funding to just scoop in the pot and get this all done. We have issues with making sure we have public support and the perception of our community that they're getting value for money. There's politics. And I don't just mean Republican, Democrat. There's interpersonal relationships and factions and friends and all that sort of thing. I know all these things are headwinds. There is a huge demand for other resources, aside from just building. And the need is immediate. Because even if the homes aren't going to be built tomorrow, if you know that they're coming, it takes a minute or two to build schools as well. So, there's not really any time for y'all to put off this decision. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to come to you as quickly as we could when we had this information. But on the other hand, with this new growth, I do see that we would have an expanded tax base. The picture facing Lawrence now and the prospect of new schools is entirely different than it was a couple of years ago. With the new growth, we have the possibility to retain and attract new and, and good teachers that we already have by being a community where they want to live. And we have a place for them to live, rather than living in Simpson, Veller, Fountain, and having to commute and that, getting old and losing after a while. There are new community partnerships to be had, not only with the county and city, but I know a pres- particular college is very interested in working with Lawrence fifty-five and, and sort of taking an all-hands-on-deck approach. We will see a gradual increase in homes. So, there is time to adjust. Perhaps it might be that we see more young students before we see more high school-aged students. So, that may be sort of part of the plan, is adjusting in that way. The school district has assets that could be used for expansion. There are holdings within the vicinity of the middle school and Ford School. And, and the community has assets that I'm sure we could work with the school district to acquire if that was necessary. I think that there is also a significant amount of public support to address these legitimate needs. What frustrated me when we were having a debate about a new high school a few years ago was that I heard from a lot of folks that they weren't in support of the plan that was presented that was on the ballot. But it wasn't a vote to no schools, period. It was a vote no about that particular plan. And, and I hope that the divisiveness and discord that was caused during that debate doesn't scare us away from approaching this need and understanding that there is still plenty of the community, and I would wager you say, the majority of the community, that sees that this is a legitimate need that needs to be addressed and would like to address in a cooperative way. We also have the benefit of experience in dealing with that. And finally, I'll just sort of end with the South Carolina Constitution. Many folks don't know this, but the South Carolina Constitution is somewhat unique in that we have a constitutional section, Article eleven, that says that we are required, as a matter of constitutional law, to give a free public education to every child in the state. And anybody like me who's taken an oath of office has a duty to uphold that constitution. And my part of doing that is to say, I want to do whatever I can to support you all, to carry out our mission for the good of the entire community. And I think there's going to be plenty of opportunities for creative thinking that I want you to hear loud and clear that the city of Lawrence is right here. Decide you all the way. And we'll do whatever we can to help get done what needs to be done. Thank you. I'm also happy to answer your questions, but you really are.
Look, the price range there seem to be about the same as the ones that Councilman Patterson expressed. The price range, about we want to place ourselves for any teachers who want to reside here and go, you know, not involve somebody else because of, because of the building.
Certainly. So, there's a couple of different aspects to that. As Mr. Patterson pointed out, just because of material costs, you get to a point where you pretty much can't put a house together for less than that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this state. I mean, it's not impossible to do. So, anything south of that is really unlikely. Generally, the price window that I seem to be hearing a lot of is anywhere from one seventy-five to two twenty-five. And with all respect, for some folks I've heard from that have bought a house and a lot of that seems like a lot of money. But in the rest of the nation, that's sort of not, not unusual. But with that said, there's still plenty of people, young teachers included, that may not be in a position to either have a down payment or be able to afford that. And so, one of the things I've been working very hard on is making sure that affordable rental housing is a, is a part of that equation. So, that we can attract nice apartment complexes and places that would be new and safe that any young teacher would feel.
Because I wasn't sure if it included townhouses or anything of that nature as well.
Yes, ma'am. It certainly would. And in fact, one of the.
They're just as costly as a standalone house.
Correct. That, that density can help bring down the cost. You're absolutely right. And, and one of the things that we've done as a city council is amend our zoning ordinance to allow for single-family dwellings in the central business district, which is the area around the square. So, it's sort of taking our zone and making it a relatively modern approach where you might have a young teacher and here she doesn't care that much about maintaining the yard, but would like to be able to walk to the square and grab a cup of coffee in the morning. You can do that.
And also, it's because of diversity in employment here. So, that makes a big difference as well.
Absolutely. And, and I did want to commend Dr. Thomas and her staff for the partnership that. that they have pursued with the city in being able to provide grants for teachers who are actually moving into the area, so that we can either help pay for some down payment costs or closing costs or whatever, just as a further incentive. If there's anything that you see in looking over this that you haven't thought of tonight, I know I've listened to me talk a little bit like drinking a little fire sometimes, please reach out to me. I'm more than happy to sit down and have a conversation. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Sam. People will live quite long, and now we have our school reports. And first off, it's Mr. Zach Watson with Ford Elementary.
Good evening, Superintendent Thomas and Ford Elementary, as well as our Lawrence 55 staff, as well as our community members. I am Zach Watson, with Ford Elementary School. And tonight I have the honor of sharing our year of glances with you all. I'm assuming you want to show it on there. Oh, go ahead. Okay, I do accept. Again, I have an opportunity to share our year of glances with you all for 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. I'd like to start with our heroes. These ladies have worked tirelessly over the course of the last year, along with our transportation department, just couldn't get them together to get the picture in the same outfit, because that's not how they roll the punches at them. But our nutrition department, along with our transportation department, has worked throughout the year to ensure that our students' basic needs are met. They've done a phenomenal job, and I would be the first to say thank you to these ladies, along with our entire nutrition department and our transportation department. Our students have missed to be, in terms of their basic needs, who've been met because of the work of these ladies and as well as our transportation department. We'll talk a little bit more about those needs and their emotional support as well as go through. 2020, 2021, for August, we have four. The first, as in any year, is a safe and orderly school. That had changed. The plan for us is to ensure every year that our students enter an environment that is safe and orderly. The pandemic changed the way that we operate quite a bit this year, so our safety protocols changed, and we ensured all year that we were doing our part to slow the spread and stop the spread back at the beginning of the year. We put together a short video outlining our new safety protocol, one to ensure that our parents had an opportunity to be aware of what we were expecting in the customer environment, but the other was to kind of alleviate some of the stress parents had by bringing their babies into an environment during the pandemic. So we were successful, I would say, in that we haven't had any significant outbreaks at our school throughout the year. Our students and staff have done a great job of following the protocols and everything to say. Priority number two, student social and emotional support. I have a lot of information academia is kind of speaking around, speaking towards the impact of, the negative impact of the pandemic on students' social and emotional wellbeing. I've got a few slides to share with our students' social and emotional wellbeing, and it kind of speaks to the antithesis of what we're hearing in terms of the negative impact. Our students are appearing to move in the right direction, particularly when it comes to the emotional needs and the social support. Our third priority definitely was academic recovery, and will continue to be academic recovery as we go into the 2022 school year, for obvious reasons. Because of loss of instructional time, the pandemic isolated many of our students, putting them in positions where they were unable to access the learning environment. So we wanted to ensure that we put in place opportunities for our students to recover a lot of that lost instructional time. And again, I'll show us that we go through some of the work that's been done to help move those students in the right direction. And the last, fourth priority is school culture. My philosophy is an elementary education leader. It's different than middle school and high school, where I've worked in all three, but in elementary, it is imperative that we nurture, protect, and educate those little ones. This is their first experience with learning. We want to ensure that it's a positive one. So everything we want to do, we want to make sure that it's rooted in what's best for students. So we want to always create a culture that is vibrant and joyous for our students. And the last slide, I'll talk a little bit more about how that's impacted a particular group of our babies. First slide we have here is our discipline. That speaks to safety and the social and emotional wellbeing of our students. You can see on the left, pretty small, that's 2019 data, at the same period that we're in now. We didn't have an opportunity to have this data in 2020. So when we look at that data, that brings up May 17th, I believe last Monday is when it pulled in. But in short, let me see if I can operate this. If you look there at the top, the number of students is approximately the same, 430, 430. If you look down to the number of referrals, at this point, we had a total of 97. Same amount of students. This year? Thirty-two. The referrals are way down. We set a goal to ensure that we are, in 2019, eight, nineteen, only 15% of less of our students, this was first, were a little bit higher than that then, 17%. And then 2020, we went to 10, and then this year, we wanted to ensure that it's at five. The key piece there is the repeat offenders. If you look at 2019, there were, I think, 28 or 25, but I know this year, that number is way down to a small eight. With that being said, when we talk about social and emotional support and wellbeing of our students, this referral is a direct indication of how students are doing emotionally and socially, because when they are under trauma, or they have emotional stress, they have behaviors. Those behaviors are way down this year. In fact, we met our goal of less than 5% of our students being repeat offenders, and we know exactly who that small number of students are that are repeat offenders, in terms of incidents at the school. And all 32, I would range from bus referrals to things as simple as misuse of school property. Now, this next slide kind of delves a little bit deeper into the data around discipline incidents. The reason I'm sharing this one is because when you talk about social and emotional wellbeing, you know, things like the use of inappropriate use of materials, not an emotional or social piece, it's just a behavior. But when we look at those things like inappropriate language, major classroom disruptions, that student's acting out. Something is wrong. So what we generally, what we do when we have those situations, we get to the groove of it by working with the family, the teacher, and the student, to ensure that whatever's ailing that student, we have an opportunity to live with anybody. We know exactly what each of these students are. If you look at that data, that's pulled on May 17th from early September, with 430 students, that amount of incidents is extremely low. The highlighted piece at the bottom is our truancy data. Eight students with 35, 57, 10 unexcused absences. Pandemic impacted that. Definitely want to look at that from a social and emotional standpoint, as well as academic recovery. But when we look at that data, of 81 students, as we met with parents and gone in and received explanations for the absences, that number's down to about half of that, in terms of parents just kind of not really understanding how to best provide the information that we need when a baby may be out with a fever, or some sort of an ailment that would be akin to COVID, they would keep them out. Some stayed out due to exposure, and the excuses kind of rolled in. So a lot of it is virtual students that may have logged on and they stay in the entire time and were marked absent, so we're actually cleaning those up as well. So when we look at that truancy data, it's a matter of us making sure that our community and our parents are aware of the processes that we follow when it comes to reporting students' attendance. Not so much students just not attending our school there. It's not that they don't want to be there. It's a lot of that is just making sure that we clean up with the parents, the absences, and the number of excuses that they provide to. But that also speaks to the social and emotional piece as well, so we'll make sure that number's down. When you see those things like hitting and fighting, we just don't have it, which means that when you look at that on the surface, emotionally, our students are pretty stable, and they're operating like they should in the social setting of the school. That's the data that I would like to utilize when we speak about the impact of the data on our students' social and emotional, because it's the truest picture of their behavior. I'll move to the next section here, and speaks to our social and emotional support, being our second priority, what we do. We have daily student check-in and family needs assessments. Our staff is great at working with parents. We have Ms. Jones, who, this last one, is the District 55 staff. What is it? The 55, it's a specific name.
Spirit 55.
The-
Spirit 55.
Spirit 55, we're a recipient, right for myself, because she does a tremendous job in reaching out to our families, particularly our Spanish-speaking families, who may have a harder time understanding what's happening. But we check in with those students that have needs early and often, make sure we do those family needs assessments, and get those families the right round services and supports that they need. We also were fortunate to have the opportunity to enroll some of our students in Engage SC Recovery Program, particularly those that were virtual students that had numbers of absences due to being virtual, as well as some of our community, our face-to-face students. So we avail that opportunity to a large portion of our families, and they're taking advantage of it to help support our students socially, academically, and emotionally. We also have a student safe place and a friendly face for our students. Look at those students that have multiple referrals. We have one young man, and we are all over in the building, but he has a safe place that he knows that he can go when he's feeling a little bit emotionally stressed. This is a teacher that he can go to in class, and there's no judgment. He loves working with students that are a little bit younger than he is. He feels a sense of responsibility to him, and he goes there, and he has a friendly face, so that he doesn't act out and end up in a situation where he's done something that would warrant a consequence. And we have that in place. We're talking about students that may be dealing with some things that they need support from an additional adult. And then we have sensitivity and flexibility coaching. What I mean by that is, when we have incidents, we meet with our staff members and teachers and the units of our grade committees and have a discussion, and we think the way that we've gone through situations and do the what-ifs, and what next, and how we better do this the next, the next time it happens, and ensure that our staff members are sensitive to our students' needs, and that they understand that we have to be flexible in all of the different. Not the last piece, the last piece in reference to our students is grace. We make sure that we extend grace to our students. We need it as adults, and our children need it as well. So when they make mistakes, they don't always necessarily receive the right consequences. They see the coaching and guidance, and opportunities to get it right next time. And last, but not least, staff wellness is super important, in that if our staff members are happy, then they project that onto the students. Although they're professionals, if things are happening that impact them negatively, then it's very difficult for us not to project onto the students. So we make sure that that, and ourselves, and as far as we do our well checks on our staff, check the temperature, and if we find that some are a little bit off, we make sure that we are supporting them with whatever they need. Our teachers are human, just like the remainder of our community, and they have things happen that they need support and time. So we make sure we avail that to them, and make sure that they feel okay coming to us to be able to express that they may need something to support their wellness. So that's how we support our students socially and emotionally. The next priority was academic recovery. We set a goal early on, to serve 40% of our total population, and all of our third-grade students scored below, the low level in reading. Those students had a predictive measure early on in the fall that would predict either their ability to meet the reading standard or not. So we wanted to grab all of those students up. We got those students in the beginning rounds of our academic recovery sessions and throughout, to ensure that they have the best chance to go from not meeting to meeting or exceed. The third goal of the academic recovery is to improve student performance indicators in reading and math. Our academic recovery was set up in three sessions, six weeks each, October to May Round One. Again, just our third-grade students that served, served total recovery for Round Two, when we served the majority of our students, the bulk of the group that participated, that was 67 students. In fact, in that round, I think we ever had several that were served virtually as well, Round Three, which is just finished. We had K-3 and 5, 46 students, and did not get the other grades, just not having the personnel to support. The extended data for the other grades. But I want to move on to the next piece of our data, particularly this piece, in that percentage of our total population served, our goal was 20, we served 23%. Percentage of students with improved reading levels out of this group of students that participate in academic recovery were 95%. Percentage of students showing high growth on math assessments out of this group, 68%. Not all of them scored, but that high growth when it comes to math, I've got a few slides I've shared that with, you generally want to see 10 to 14 points growth over a year in math assessments. So 25 points and above, definitely consider that high growth of both two. This is how we kind of chart our academic recovery growth. This is a group, it's hard for me to see it back here, but of course, the names have been somewhat redacted. But what I want to share is that we charted how they're performing, that group of students that we have participating in the academic recovery program, because we want to see if it's working, if it's impacting the students. And when you look at the data, we have growth in many of the areas that are measurable, as well as the kindergarten group, many of them were part of, they all were part of the academic recovery program, because they were behind in terms of their measures of academic progress. So they're closer to the measure when you look at the numbers that they have there. This is the second-grade group, with the BIM data, had the fast bridge data that did pretty well there. And then you have their math data on the right side, where you can kind of look and see where they can fall too much. And that's what you, that's what we gauge our program on, are we growing our students? And if it's not growing, then why not? And then what do we need to do to move, to move in a direction that we're using things that are working to move our students in the right direction? This, our next two slides are, I call them top benchmark performance, but this is a group of kindergartners, and all eight of these babies participate in academic recovery program. So when you look at this pie chart, what you see is in the red, those are students not meeting. The bar outside represents that out of our district. The light orange represents students closely or approaching yellow, those are the students that are on target, and green are those students that are moving into the excelling category, and the blue are students that are excelling. So when you look at this little small quadrant of students that participate in academic recovery program, it's lit up blue. Those were students that originally were not performing. They were in that orange category. So what we're doing is having an impact that is positively, positively impacting the students, as you can see from the percentage of students in that small quadrant that are in the exceeding category, of which none would have been there part two. Same thing here with our third-grade group. Look at that, the bars on the outside here represent the district, so we want to make sure that we're closing that gap. You look at the ELA, it's like about 45% of those students are on target from yellow to blue, whereas those were groups of students that were not, which is why we have them in the academic recovery program. Then again, with the math, closing that gap with those students that are in that orange, deep red realm, ensuring that we move them into the approaching and meet standard pieces there. So we want to make sure that that type of growth continues to happen. This, next, the next few slides are high growth. Again, like I mentioned, with our math measures of academic progress data, 10 to 14 points, typical for a year of year's growth. We've got to get more than a year's growth if we've got babies that are behind. The A reading growth that you see there, you're on about 20 points, so we consider those students 25 and above having high growth. So in first grade, and these are not just academic recovery students, these are our general population, fourth-grade students, I mean, first-grade students. 33 to 25 points, 12 students had that high range of growth in math reading. 14 students with winter to spring. Keep in mind, that growth, we're talking about over a year, 10 to 14. This is a sort of interval, winter to spring. This is a short interval, winter to spring. Very atypical for students to grow thirty-six points in a small interval like that. Fourteen altogether ranging from thirty-six to fourteen. In math, nineteen students with winter to spring growth measures ranging from twenty-eight points growth down to fourteen. Second grade, very similar. We had one student with seventy-nine point increase there and the others ranged about forty down to that twenty-five, the other twenty-five about forty down to twenty-five point growth. Math reading, nineteen students with winter to spring, again, growth measures ranging from thirty-nine to seventeen points. Same in math, there were twenty-two students at second grade with forty down to about fourteen point growth. And it doesn't mean that the other students didn't grow, we're just looking at the high growth. You know, and typical growth, someone had it over. And now our third grade students, math reading, sixteen students with winter to spring growth measures are ranging from thirty-nine down to fifteen points. The highest score at third grade in math reading was two hundred and nineteen. That's three points above the excellent expectation had the next grade. Math, math, seventeen students with winter to spring growth measures ranging from twenty-six to seventeen points. The highest score there in math was two fourteen and that exceeds the fourth grade typical target standard. I'm sorry, target standard. So that student will be on target for that, they're fourth grade student right now in math with a score of two fourteen. Fourth grade math, fourteen students, spring to winter math growth ranging from twenty-four points down to fourteen. The highest score in fourth grade math was two hundred and twenty-three points. With that student, already eighteen points, winter to spring growth on our measure. Fourth grade reading, seventeen students with winter to spring growth measures ranging from twenty-seven to fourteen points. The highest score there was two twenty-one, exceeds the fifth grade target expectation. Fifth grade math reading, all students with winter to spring growth measures ranging from twenty-nine to fourteen points. There were eleven of those, the highest score there in fifth grade reading was two thirty-seven and this exceeds the eighth grade excellent expectation, top target there. Fifth grade math math, eighteen students with winter to spring growth measures ranging from thirty-four to fourteen. The highest score in fifth grade was two fifty. We actually had two students score in that range. And what I mean by that range, the excellent range, expectation range at third grade, it's two forty-four. We had two students score above that and one scored two fifty. And I say to our staff, congratulations in that you all had students, we all had students that yielded outstanding growth major performance in reading, language arts, and math. We don't stop there because we have students that are still behind and we want to make sure that all of them are meeting our seats and you want to take a moment to celebrate that we're moving them in the right direction. And the most important component is how the babies, that's why the wheels turn at the school. That's keeping the main thing, the main thing, and it's the babies. And ours are happy and flourish, actively engaged, safe and ordered. They're exploring and growing and lastly, they're loving and caring. Now, remember I talked about the culture in the very beginning. This is a family here of students, and they pull up in a little van in the mornings. At the beginning of the year, they would kick and scream to not get out of the van for a few weeks back in September. And it was screaming in gnashing of teeth as well of getting about. As the year has progressed, that little van pulls up and if it's in the back of the car loop, we know we've got a dark to the van because if they don't have the child safety lock on, they'll feed it, go and pop out and they're going to sprint directly into the building, to the school because they want to be the first of that group to be there. And so that speaks directly to the culture that's created by our staff there at the school by changing the way our students perceive our environment. Those guys, they absolutely love being at school, they're poor kids too. So I definitely commend the sales and the staffs for what they've done to bring those babies around. But look at old Daniel in the middle with his new pack he owns. He's reading sight word, he's a sight word, he's champion, starting out, no English in the very beginning. And he is reading at a level that would have been prepared not only for kindergarten, but the end of kindergarten, maybe first grade, four-year-old student that had zero English, almost zero English showing up. So our students can do it, our staff can do it. We've got a great foundation and I want to make sure that as this year closes, that the traction that we carry and we carry it into twenty-two, one twenty-two school.
Thank you, Mr. Watson, I appreciate that. Next up, we have Ms. Ellen from GCO.
Good evening. I'm honored to be here tonight to share with you and the Lawrence fifty-five community about the good things going on at Gray Court Owens Elementary and Middle School. I'm blessed to be the principal of such a hardworking and dedicated staff and all seven hundred and fifty-two wonderful students that we serve each day. Everyone at GCO works very hard to carry out the mission to empower and inspire all to be educated and informed. At the beginning of the school year, we knew we were facing challenges that we had never experienced before. And I asked my staff to be all in for the students, but to be prepared to practice flexibility. And this is exactly what everyone has done at GCO this year. We have faced challenges, we've experienced many successes, and continue to focus on the academic recovery and growth of our students. At Gray Court Owens School, we have sixty-five certified staff, twenty-five support staff members who serve our seven hundred and fifty-two students. Five hundred and ninety-two of those students are face-to-face and one hundred and sixty are participating in our Lawrence County Virtual Academy. As you well know, our district has focused this year on academic recovery for our students due to the school closure last March. So I would like to share with you some of the academic recovery and instructional initiatives that we have in place for our students, but also for our teachers at GCO. Instructional coaches have worked with teachers in coaching cycles throughout the year and they have focused on classroom management, instructional planning, HMH math implementation, instructional strategies in all content areas, small group instruction, and data analysis. We have offered professional development opportunities to our teachers in personalized learning, the priority standards, guided reading, leveled literacy interventions, mathematical discourse, using the book Reimagining the Mathematics Classroom, data notebooking, and text dependent analysis training. We have continued to implement the multi-tiered system of supports or MTSS. Meetings have been held with all teachers in kindergarten through fifth grade, both our face-to-face teachers and our virtual teachers to discuss progress of students throughout the year. The data notebooks have been kept with student tier groups, interventions in place, and the results of those interventions. When time is implemented on a daily basis, this is what I need time. And all elementary classes have this time in their daily schedule. Teachers are able to work with the students based on needs during this time. Our teachers participate in professional learning communities and these PLCs are held with face-to-face teachers and LCVA teachers in elementary and middle school on a weekly basis. The focus during these PLCs has been student data-driven. Teachers plan standards-based instruction, create common assessments, discuss assessment results, and plan next steps based on that data. Some of the professional development has been embedded into these PLCs as well. They also have used the data notebooks during the PLCs to include their pre- and post-assessments, analysis of the data, small group instruction, and teacher observation during the lessons. And much of the focus during the PLCs has been to strengthen tier one and tier two instruction in the classroom. We also have our Twenty First Century After School program. And in the fall, when this program began, we had fifty students to start the program. Throughout the year, we've had some students stop coming, so when that happened, we added more. So to continue to have a full program throughout the year. In addition to the Twenty First Century After School program, we have also implemented our Academic Recovery Small Group Tutoring. Sometimes this has been before school, but most of the time after school. But this is in addition to the Twenty First Century After School program. The Academic Recovery Small Group Tutoring, we've offered four different, three to four rounds of small group tutoring assistance for our face-to-face and LCVA students. The first round was during the three weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas and fifty-one of our students participated in this first round. We serve students in this first round who were identified as one year behind in reading or math based on fall math scores. We also serve tier three LCVA students and some third and fifth grade students who just needed additional support in reading and math. The second round of tutoring took place during the month of January when our district was operating on an e-learning phase. Eighteen kindergarten through fifth grade students were served virtually during this e-learning time. And this was in addition to their normal day during their e-learning time. This was also after-school time that they were at home. During the third round of tutoring, we served third graders who received read-to-succeed letters based on math scores. In addition to these third graders, some students in 5K, first, second, fourth, and fifth were served, as well as a small group of middle school students who participated in a group club. Forty-five students were served during this third round of tutoring. A fourth round of tutoring began after spring break. Forty-three students in kindergarten through second grades and thirty middle school students have been served during this fourth round of tutoring. And the last academic recovery model I'd like to talk with you about tonight is what we call our Intervention Push-In Model that we began in February. Due to the high number of students in 5K and first grade who were identified as tier three during MTSS meetings, our academic interventionist, Teresa Cloud and Kristy Brulington, worked with the classroom teachers and Miss Bond, our elementary instructional coach, to implement a rotation of instruction in the classroom with a three-person team so that all students in those classes could benefit from small group instruction. A schedule was created so that all 5K and first grade classes received an hour of this intervention every day. We utilized the interventionist, instructional coach, classroom teachers, classroom assistants, the library assistant, and the student teacher to complete the three-person team for each class. During the hour of instruction, students rotate to receive instruction in guided reading, math intervention, and word work or writing instruction. This intervention push-in model has proven to be successful and I have a few data charts I'd like to share with you in just a minute. Because of the success of this intervention push-in model, the interventionists have added 4K to their schedule two days a week to push in, to have rich conversations with the 4K students and to work with them in centers alongside the classroom teacher and assistant. The interventionists are also now pulling small groups for second grade students as well. Because of these academic recovery and instructional initiatives, we have some data that we would like to share. This chart shows kindergarten early reading screening scores using the Fastbridge Assessment. And I'd like to point out that the data shows that the percentage of students in the high-risk category decreased from winter to spring and the percentage of students in the low-risk to no-risk category increased in that movement from winter to spring. And the next chart shows the same trend for our 5K students in math. And we have the same trend of decreasing the percentage of students in the high-risk category and increasing the percentage of students in the low to no-risk category in first grade as well. In addition to the Fastbridge data providing evidence of academic growth, we also have areas to celebrate growth using the spring math data. GCO had the highest growth in the district in reading and math in grades four, seven, and eight. We have the second highest growth in the district in reading for first, second, third, and fifth. And in math, in second and sixth. We are proud and excited that the data identifies areas of success in academic growth. However, we also know that when looking at the levels of student achievement and comparing these levels to grade level expectations, we still have lots of work to do. So we will continue with the efforts of academic recovery and work to provide even more educational opportunities and interventions when possible. But our focus will remain to be student data-driven. Let me go back, sorry. Didn't even start it so quickly.
Uh-oh.
Go back one more.
One more? Okay, let me just say, now we would like to highlight more great things going on at GCO, but I want to recognize Mr. Austin Garland who is here tonight. Also, Ms. England is here with me too as support, so I appreciate them being here. But Mr. Austin Darling has helped to get this presentation together for tonight, but most of all, I want to recognize Mr. Darling and Ms. Lindsay Dawkins for working so closely with our new GCO Student Council. So please enjoy these clips from our WGCO News Show presented by our Student Council as they share a few highlights from our school.
Good morning and welcome to the WGCO News Show on Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
I am Blissed Churchill, your seventh grade representative.
And I am Chloe King, your secretary.
I am Jayla Wright, your sixth grade rep.
And I am Carlos Cruz Lopez, your sixth grade rep. Today is a B-day for middle school students.
America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation undefeated.
Have a great day, GCO.
See you tomorrow, GCO.
I don't know what's good.
Thanks, Keaton. As many of you know, St. Patrick's Day is often celebrated in the United States as a celebration for Irish culture.
You'll never catch me, Eeeyee.
There it is, after all.
Today is Cinco de Mayo. For those who don't know, Cinco de Mayo is a holiday marking the anniversary of the first battle at Puebla on May fifth, eighteen sixty-two. A small Mexican army of two thousand men defeated-
To those who celebrate, we wish you all a happy Cinco de Mayo.
...of the standards of excellence, you two are charged with-
The National Junior Honor Society.
The National Junior Honor Socios are the true for which it stands, for which it stands.
The highest standards-
Of scholarship.
Guys, that tomorrow is Virtual Career Day. What does that mean? During Thirty for Thirty time, you guys are going to have the opportunity to watch a presentation that I've put together with the help of a lot of professionals literally throughout the world.
You'll see them with the long white coat. I will get that when I graduate from med school, when I finally get my medical license. And then, you know, a big part of being a medical student and a physician-
Hey guys, my name is Blaine Darling and I'm a production creative member here at First Baptist Simpsonville Upstate Church. Hey guys, my name is Blaine Darling and I'm a production creative member here at First Baptist Simpsonville Upstate Church.
Everybody, my name is Lieutenant Joshua Lefon Fabier and I am a naval officer on the submarine you see behind me here, the USS Cheyenne.
Into your belly, and out.
I want you guys to put your home room name. We want you guys to each day put the number of cans that your classroom collects.
...break, middle school had a Spring Spirit Week. Our canned food drive to benefit Gray Court Food Bank had a great turnout.
We did a great job at canning out our principal and pushing her out of her office and hope for a bigger turnout next year.
We are proud to announce that the winner of the food drive and the winner of the spirit sword is Mr. Sewell's class with a total of fifty-four cans.
I be placed the spirit sword upon you.
Can I recall?
Now, I knight you, Sir Sewell of Gray Court and of GCO.
Thank you to everyone who participated in bringing all these cans. Together, we got three hundred and forty cans. Great turnout, GCO.
It's coming. It's coming. Something big is coming.
Do you know what it is? Could it be?
Do you know what it is?
I wish I knew what it was.
They have hope. Benji, if you will, both of you will come down and get your presents.
Hey guys, today is Principal Appreciation Day. We're gonna surprise Ms. Penlon and thank her for all she does.
Hello. Oh.
Thank you for all you do for us.
Oh.
We love you.
Oh, I love you too. Thank you so much.
I'm a whole mask up. I can give a hug. You are so sweet.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I love you all. And I do it because I love you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are proud of our students and staff at GCO. We appreciate your support and the support of our parents and community as we continue to focus on academic recovery and student success. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Penlon. Now we will move on to Dr. Thompson's report.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and other principals, good evening. I'd like to thank Mr. Rockson and Ms. Penlon for their school reports and also for all of their hard work as well as all of the hard work of their staff as well. Thank you. There are wonderful things that are happening in our district, and I'm honored to be able to share some of the outstanding learning experiences, student and staff accomplishments, and some updates of the wonderful things happening in Lawrence 55. May has been a very busy month, and we have a lot to be grateful for. First, I'd like to remind everyone that even through the challenges of this year, we've never lost sight of what matters, and we remain focused on keeping the main thing, the main thing, and that is high-quality instruction for all students in our district. We have remained unwavering in our commitment to our mission statement of empowering and inspiring all to be educated and informed, as well as our mission statement to prepare students for success in learning and careers through engaging, challenging, and personalized learning experiences. Students are curious and confident in their own abilities, competitive in local, national, and global environments. Students are safe, valued, and supported in their learning by highly effective staff, families, and communities. There's still much work to do in the remaining weeks of school, and we, as educators, know how to support our students and their success. We will continue to make every moment matter and continue with a sense of urgency as we finish this school year strong. During the week of May the 3rd to the 7th, we celebrated National Teacher Appreciation Week. We delivered to each school an appreciation for each employee, which included a cookie that said, "Thank you for being a tough cookie", along with a bottle of water and lemonade packet with the message, "When life gave you lemons, you got to work and make the very best lemonade, and we do appreciate that." I would like to take this opportunity to give thanks to our teachers for their dedication and hard work, especially during these challenging times. Our teachers have been unwavering in their dedication to our students and their continued learning despite the many challenges posed by this pandemic and despite some of the negativity that they may have had to face. We are incredibly proud of our Lawrence County School District 55 teachers and staff, and we thank them for all of their efforts on behalf of our students. May the 12th was National School Nurse Day. I also want to take this opportunity to celebrate and recognize the contributions of our school nurses. We can't thank them enough for what they're doing to ensure the health and safety of our students and staff during these trying times. We are truly appreciated today and every day. We're very grateful for our school nurses. School Principals' Day was celebrated on May the 1st. With that being on a Saturday this year, we honored principals with a gift of appreciation when they came to meet with me for their academic recovery meeting. These men and women go above and beyond each day, and especially this year. It is a challenging position under normal circumstances, and I truly appreciate all of their hard work and dedication. School Lunch Hero Day was celebrated on May the 7th. All student nutrition employees received goodies along with a huge thank you for all of their hard work. This group has served over 1.5 million meals since March 2020, and they have worked tirelessly throughout the pandemic, the summer months, and they've gone well beyond, above and beyond. So we're very thankful and appreciative for all of their hard work and all of their efforts. Our Community Eligibility Provision Agreement has been accepted for the four-year period of July the 1st, 2021 through June the 30th, 2025. This means that we are approved to continue providing all students in our schools and community with free breakfast and lunch for the four years of the agreement. The Department of Student Nutrition will operate the summer meal program beginning June the 21st at the High School, Lordwood Elementary School, and Lawrence Elementary School. All other locations will begin on June the 28th. Please note that Edingworth Elementary will have a summer meal program due to the, will not have a summer meal program due to the on-site construction. However, those students are allowed to pick up meals at any of the other sites, and those summer meals will be provided pre-July 29. So I definitely would like to thank Ms. Wanda Noddy and her staff for all that they do with feeding the students in our schools and communities. Very excited about our reading initiative. This is our reading buddies. And our goal in the reading buddies initiative is making and distributing buddies to engage our early learners to grow a law of reading. So this is very similar to Build-A-Bear, but it is something that we're bringing to Lawrence 55 and what we'll actually do right here in this region in our community. Children can read to their buddy or cuddle with their buddy while here there are reads to them. Reading buddies help encourage children to read by simply being present as a listening ear or by serving as a routine reminder, "Go meet your buddy. It's time to read." Reading buddies love to listen to stories and cuddle with a book. Volunteers are needed for this initiative. This will take place on June the 8th, so for those who are interested, please let us know. We would love to have you join us as we create our reading buddies for our early learners. We will also begin sharing those reading buddies this summer to students. So if you're interested in volunteering, please contact Ms. Erin Lake, her number 681-3642, or you can just call our main number, 864-943-568. Again, I'm very excited about this reading initiative, and I would like to thank the Teaching and Learning Department for helping me make this possible. I'm also very excited to announce that we have been awarded an Early Math Initiative Grant. With this, we will get professional development, pre-kindergarten high-quality mathematics curriculum. We will also receive developmentally appropriate materials, home activities and home materials, and selected teachers will receive an honorarium. The research from this grant shows improved school readiness and student achievement in math. In fact, participating students were performing at the national average in math. Again, very excited about this early math initiative. The 2021-2022 Instructors for the Lawrence County Virtual Academy will be provided through EdMentor and Options Academy, which is a fully accredited online course option for kindergarten through 12th grade students. This platform provides expert educators that offer personalized attention to bring virtual learning to real life for every student. South Carolina State Certified Teachers will provide live lessons, collaborative group activities, and live help hours for all students. They will also offer support as the students work throughout the day on their own for independent work. These students will be in constant communication with our district instructional leaders as well as the Teaching and Learning Department staff as they continue to complete the work virtually. So this program will not utilize our Lawrence County School District 55 teachers as we move into the next school year. Just with the number of students that we currently have signed, that was our best option.
I know some people used to be following some cloud days that come in desert.
There will be certain times, set times, that they will be available. You know, they can definitely send a message, but not necessarily respond 24 hours a day. But there will be live instructors and there will be prompts for them to provide support and help.
They do notify our staff, our teachers, the home class, and higher reports from that system.
Yes, so our Teaching and Learning Department will be in constant communication and will receive updates provided-
So it's not through the schools?
Correct.
Home class to Teaching and Learning Department out there.
Yes, I see. The Lawrence 55 State Helper Group will meet on Wednesday, May the 27th. This group is composed of educators, parents, and community members. The purpose of this task force is to get feedback regarding our Lawrence 55 reopening plan, safety protocols, and input on how we should spin our SRF. The Lawrence County School District 55 Academic Recovery Task Force met on May the 13th. Our next meeting will take place on May the 27th. This task force is made up of educators throughout the district, and the purpose of this group is to brainstorm and come up with solutions regarding strategies to mitigate learning loss due to the pandemic. Also to brainstorm strategies and come up with solutions for academic recovery and learning acceleration. Brainstorm strategies, needs, and solutions to move learning forward for all students. And also just discussion of support and resources that are needed. So we're very excited. In our first meeting, we received some very important information, and so I do appreciate all of those who participated in our Academic Recovery Task Force meeting, and I look forward to our next meeting as well. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. We will have our last session of the Parent Academy Series on May the 27th. We have been focusing on mental health awareness as well as social-emotional learning. The topic for this week is the critical importance of birth to three-years-old, the impact of these early years on the social-emotional lives of children, teenagers, and adults. Any of the, anyone interested in attending, this is virtual, and the registration is located on our website. The Robots Garage has opened registration for the 2021 Hot Rod STEM Camp for rising third through eighth graders. The dates of the camp are July the 12th through the 15th, from 8:30 to 5:00 p.m. each day. The cost of the camp is $150, and there are scholarships also available. In an attempt to adhere to the COVID-19 protocols, we limited the number of campers this summer, so we have a total of eighty-four slots that are available. The Ena Course Examination Program is a statewide assessment program of EOC tests for gateway courses awarded units of credit in English, Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. EOC assessments are administered for Algebra I, Biology, English I, English II, U.S. History, and the Constitution. It is an honor to report that the following LDHS students obtained a perfect score on their EOC for the fall in the area designated. For Biology, Laurel McDowell, Haley Morris, Jaden Parsons, Higbee Hilton, and Danielle Vincent. English II, Robert Simmons and Emma Limer. Congratulations to these students on their outstanding academic achievement. Three students in our district have been identified as the South Carolina Junior Scholars. These students qualified based on PSAT scores and received recognition through the 2020-2021 South Carolina Junior Scholar Identification and Development Program. This year's Lawrence 55 students who qualified are Sandra Alvarez from Hickory Tavern, Katrina Hilton, also from Hickory Tavern, and Aubrey Belcher from Lawrence Middle School. Also, congratulations to these students for their accomplishments. Want to congratulate Bailey Burns, who's a sophomore at Lawrence County High School, for being the recipient of the 2020 Cecil Old Davenport Citizenship Award. Bailey is an honor student, a member of Student Council, and a cheerleader. She was a representative for the South Carolina Electric Co-op Virtual Youth Experience and attended the South Carolina Conference for the Prevention of Bullying. Congratulations to Bailey on this achievement. Would also like to congratulate Elena Pitts for being selected as an agricultural intern for the Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce. Elena Pitts has been involved in FFA program and frequently takes photographs at agriculture events. She became the first agriculture intern of the Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce starting in February of this year and has assisted with creating social media content, updating the Lawrence County Agriculture Website, and she shares her photography skills. Congratulations to Elena Pitts. The Seal of Ball Literacy is an award that recognizes students who obtain a certain level of proficiency and of English at least on one additional world language by graduation. Currently, in addition to the state of South Carolina, forty states and Washington, DC have approved Seals of Ball Literacy. In other states, Seals of Ball Literacy are under active consideration by State Departments of Education. Congratulations to the following LDHS students who received the Seal of Ball Literacy of this school year based on their assessment. Audrey Maddox, Bronze. Priscilla Potilawa, Silver. Nancy Renoso, Bronze. These students received a medallion and a certificate from a school in the district, and so also a huge congratulations on their achievements. The Rotary Club of Lawrence recognized the top 10 students with the highest cumulative GPA for their class at a launch end on Thursday, May the 13th. Congratulations to the seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen who ranked in the top 10 of their class. Mauricio Geralis, a senior at Lawrence City High School, has been named the Upper Savannah Region Technology Champion. This award is presented each year by the South Carolina Department of Education, Office of Career and Technical Education, to a South Carolina public high school graduating senior who is a career and technical education program computer. Selection criteria includes awards and honors, attendance, community service, demonstrated leadership, extracurricular activities, grade point average, and work-based learning experiences. Congratulations on this outstanding achievement. Also, congratulations to Ms. Dabs Davis, a Lawrence City High School Work-Based Learning Coordinator, who has been named to the Upper Savannah Region winner and one of the 12 finalists for the 2021 South Carolina Career and Technical Education Career Specialist of the Year Award. The award recognizes a career specialist who exemplifies outstanding achievement in building and delivery, a high-quality career development program serving career and technical education students, faculty, and parents. We're so very excited and proud of Ms. Dabs Davis. Teachers of the Year have been selected at each school. The interviews for the district winners were held on May the 14th. The announcement of the district winner will be made in conjunction with the district's annual employee recognition event. So congratulations to the following school winners. Lauren Harlan, E.B. Morse Elementary School. Rachel Hawes, Ford Elementary School. Lindsay Dawkins, Greycourt Owens School. Claudia John, Hickory Tavern. Mary Bell Alvarez, Osobeda, Lawrence County Virtual Academy. Erin Hahn, Lawrence City High School. Belinda Richardson Mayfield, Lawrence Elementary. Tammy Chesney, Lawrence Middle. Dominique Easterland, Sanders Middle. And Abigail Petrick, Lordwood Elementary. The support staff of the year representatives from the schools and their district departments have also been selected. Congratulations to these winners. Dawn Heith, E.B. Morse, Carla Leggett, Ford Elementary. Brandon Luzorik, Greycourt. Kimberly Ornison, Hickory Tavern. Estefany Renoso, Mallian. Milligan, Lawrence City High School. Anna Beagle, Lawrence Elementary School. Lisa Chris, Lawrence Middle. Monda Delane, Sanders Middle. April Poy, Lordwood Elementary. Cody Smith, Maintenance. Brenda Choice, Student Nutrition. And Amy Wilson, Transportation. Congratulations to all of these winners. Also, congratulations to our May Spirit of 55 Award winners. Support staff, Morella Jones. Parent Coordinator for Ford Elementary School. Certified staff, Tammy Vaz. Fourth-grade teacher at Greycourt Owens School. Congratulations to these individuals, and we thank them for their dedication and service to Lawrence 55. Are there any questions regarding the district updates?
I would ask a question about Lawrence County Virtual Academy. Um, how many students do we have signed up?
We have about 80, 84 students approximately, and so, um, after going through the process of looking at all of the data and determining, um, that number, it's a little bit less, um, so we're just still kind of going through that process, but, um, we have about 84.
Those students, even if this program's run through EdMentum, they'll still be, um, in our department, will still, will still be their district.
Correct, they will still be enrolled in Lawrence 55. I do have a video at this time just to showcase a little bit of our appreciation for our staff as well as our State of the 55 winners.
And there is no education without teachers, and for that, I thank them.
I love my teacher for believing in me.
I want to thank my teachers for teaching me everything I know and more.
I want to thank my teachers for preparing me for the future.
I want to thank my teachers for being amazing and nice and ha, and grateful for having us as his students.
I want to thank my teacher for making school feel like home.
Thank you to my teacher for loving me.
I want to thank my teachers for changing my life for the better.
I want to thank my teachers for being really nice, especially Ms. Dixon.
I want to thank my teacher for always doing a good job.
On behalf of everyone in Lawrence County School District 55, I would like to express my deep gratitude to our teachers for their hard work each and every day to ensure the success of all students. Thank you for your service to Lawrence 55 and the community. Please know that you're doing a good job, and you are appreciated.
So to Lawrence County School District 55, teachers and staff, good job, and thank you.
Hallelujah, man. Hallelujah, man.
At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Red Harris to share summer, summer learning opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Talked a little bit about the summer programs tonight, you got to hand out some of the summer programs. And Dr. Frank provided me with this, and, uh, Dad, if you know, just going to go over some of this with you. I'll go through it kind of quickly, and if you have questions, I'm glad to take any questions you might have at the end. All these things we could see here tonight, all these positive things principals have talked about, Thomas has talked about, continues into the summer. Um, back in our days, summer school was something that you avoided at all costs. Uh, today, um, summer school is just more of an opportunity for a lot of students to be able to get the learning that they need, and, um, these, these teachers, and principals, administrators, everybody will continue to, um, to do the type of things to put together programs that would be beneficial and, and very meaning, meaningful for the students. So let's go over this real quickly on the dates. I provided you there with the dates, top, June 28th, we get started. Um, so not long after school is over, and not long before school begins again, um, we'll have summer school, so a lot of programs going on. Um, August, we'll be still in summer school there with, um, with some makeup for our summer PE. Just want to mention that that is a, a very good program this, this school about the last few years where rising 9th graders, we're going to get their PE out of the way during the summer. And we'll be doing that on-site at Lawrence City High School. 5K, early 4K through 12th grade, um, and as you go down the list there. SIRDEP will be our 4K and summerizing 5K kids. Um, Reading Camp, that's our 3rd graders. Um, this comes out of the Read and Succeed legislation, and these are students who are not quite where they need to be with their reading, and trying to get them where they need to be so they don't have to be retained, and most of those will make that, pass that, so. Um, some, some very good things going on. Extended Day, we'll have Extended Day with the YMCA. The YMCA continues to be a, a really good partner for us here at Lawrence 55, and they provide a lot of things for us during the summer. And our Reading Camps, just so you know, where your schools are going to be, and our Reading Camps, they'll be split into two campuses. Um, Lawrence Elementary will host EV and Ford for that Reading Camp, and Hickory Tavern will host Lordwood and Greycourt for Reading Camps on those sites. Right now, at the bottom of the page, the administration, they're getting ready for summer school, we should know in about a week or so, we'll start to get some lists of students, um, a little bit more clear of how many students we're going to be serving right now. It's not real clear on that. I can't tell you, for summer PE, we're set right now at 68 kids for summer PE, but the rest of it, I think, is still ongoing. They're giving these students chances to catch up and, and, and get some more work done so that maybe they can avoid, um, some of those having to come in. Cycle Rectors have been chosen, and they'll be doing the day-to-day work. As you go through their job description right there, they'll be doing the day-to-day work, um, as far as the schools are concerned. Instructional coaches, along with the administration, um, have been working hard, um, getting curriculum ready, um, working to identify students, doing the scheduling, and all the things that have to be done up in preparation for, um, having these students in, starting on the 28th. And then again, the YMCA will be there partnering with us for some Extended Day stuff, where these students get to enjoy some things a little bit better than, than math, reading, and science at the end of these days, so they'll look forward to that. One big note here, in the middle of that page, where it talks about pay, this has been increased, um, and, and they give me the go-ahead to say this publicly. Certified staff will not be paid $35 an hour, they will be paid $50 an hour. And I'll try and get people in to, um, to work these, uh, to work these, uh, summer schools. It's been a hard year on teachers, a lot of pressure on teachers. A quick turnaround for them as well, and get them to commit and come in. Um, it is not always the easiest thing for principals to get, but we hope to dispay. I will tell you today, I need a substitute for, um, summer PE. I sent out an email a month or so ago, I got no responses. I sent out an email today with a $50 promise per hour for pay. I got two responses in about two minutes. So, um, already it's beginning to pay off, so, um, this is, uh, this should be, this should be some incentive for teachers, um, to get them in here and, and have as, as good a teaching staff as we can in summer schools for our students. Down at the bottom of this, funding, I listed, uh, Dr. Frank listed that for you. Um, we talked about this a little bit, I thought you would like that to see where these funds are coming from. State funds, grants, at-risk funds, some of the ESSER monies were mentioned there, which we're still trying to figure out exactly what we're going to, what we'll be doing with all of those funds coming in. But, um, there's a lot of different pots that we draw from to be able to provide students with what they need in summer. So with that, um, I'll move on just real quickly to what the high school is doing. We have another sheet that talks about them, you see that they have their staff already chosen. Um, they'll be on the same schedule as we are on. Um, as with everybody, transportation will be provided for students, breakfast and lunch, one night, this is a great job. Making sure everybody gets fed. Classes will be provided through EdMentum with person, with in-person teacher support. I had a couple of questions about that earlier. The high school will be, um, that they've said that students, well, I talked to Dr. Faulk on the phone today. She said most of her high school students will do their work with the teacher in the classrooms. Most of them will be there, but they put up, they, they make sure it's mandatory that you come in at least three hours per week. Um, they'll be doing some of this work at home, they'll have teachers they can come in and see, but she did assure me that most, that she felt like most of the students would be there in person um, with those, with those teachers. So, um, they've done a lot of work at the high school getting ready for this. Um, down at the bottom, the last thing, it says the high school will be working with failing students during the month of June. They're pullouts in specific lessons in an attempt to get the grades up to at least a 50. And then if they feel like if they can get them to 50 in, in the summer school session, they can get at least a 60, and they can pass and get that credit. So they're doing a lot of work in the month of June to get kids ready for summer school. And, and they're doing that with, even with kids that...